It is 6:00 PM on February 27th. I'd like to open the meeting of the Woodbury Select Board. Call the meeting to order. Do we have any adjustments to the Select Board agenda as published?
I have something that I think is better under public comment. We need to get to that.
So here, none for adjustments to the Select Board agenda. The bills and payroll orders have been approved by signature of the Select Board and sent back to Brandy Smith for review. Unless there are others. With the exception of a signature for meeting minutes. Meeting minutes have not yet been reviewed and approved by the Select Board, but they will be immediately after the meeting. Sorry, Ms.?
I did send them to you.
Yeah, but I haven't sent them out. Because it was a draft. And I haven't seen this.
Michael doesn't get this, I am eleven years.
But he still has to review them. So they'll be approved after the meeting. Our apologies. Tough for public comment.
I just have this one email from Steve Murphy. You want to read it? Well, you guys got it too, but what he said, due to illness, I cannot attend the Select Board meeting, but I have to report on the following. The town government talk that he has set up at the Town Hall on March 4th, 8:45 to 9:45, which is just before the pre-town meeting. Informational meetings, coffee and pastries at 8:30 preceding the pre-town meeting. The library is promoting this event through posts on Front porch Forum Library website and Facebook page and Woodbury Vermont Community Facebook page. Posters at the library, post office, community bulletin board and town clerk's office and emails to town officials. Here is an excerpt from the text on the promotional poster. Inviting current and former town officials, volunteers and members of the public to ask, answer and discuss questions such as what are the duties of the town officers and what are the rules and procedure at town meeting and to share information, ideas and stories of heartiness, hardship and humor relating to our town government and experiences in public service. This event will be informative, inspiring and fun. There we go.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Are there public comment? Hearing none. We have the town clerk's report, Mr. Turkey.
I attended the mock town meeting for the elementary school on Friday, which was a lot of fun. And they did quite a bit of conversation about why or why not they should be doing it. I bet that all typed up and sent back to Steven and he said he was also gonna send it to Lisa somebody.
My card for that. Princess or principal?
Oh, the principal, okay. Yeah. And tomorrow night, I will be at Hardwick Elementary School for the elementary schools voting. And then Wednesday night, I will be at Hazen for the Hazen Board's vote.
That's for the informational meeting, right?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna go with checklist to make sure that the ones that are voting have been checked off.
Will people be voting then?
Yeah, because the only thing that they're voting on town meeting day are those, the money articles.
Right.
So they're gonna be voting.
Elections are off, elections are off.
Elections, yeah.
Yep. So Tuesday night's meeting starts at 6 o'clock, which will be in Hardwick Elementary School. And Wednesday, March 1st, will be at Hazen Auditorium at 7 o'clock. And then other thing that I have, we received from solid Vermont, Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District, the report to fill out for this coming year.
Great.
So I'll give that to you.
I need that.
Yep.
Thank you.
And that's about it. The fire extinguisher guy came today and checked out the fire extinguishers. Didn't have a problem with those.
Great.
And then something I thought about on the way up. What about snow removal for Saturday? So we'll have parking around the Town Hall.
I guess that'll be me.
We'll wait and talk about that.
Okay.
Sure.
Until we can get the town road report, but.
Oh yeah, and we brought up two more fleet permits for you to sign too, Chris.
Thank you.
Pleasant, thank you.
I will work on those as soon as I possibly can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All set for town meeting?
I believe so.
You gonna get a voting booth?
I think I'm gonna have to have two.
Two voting booths?
I think so.
Why would that be?
Well, I'm gonna have to have two checklists.
True. And two boxes?
Yep.
Yeah. But the voting booths are only, you know, depending on how many people are voting at one time.
Well, this is true. Let it be safe than sorry.
That's golden rule. Mr. Turkey?
I think that's it.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Smith, would you do the town treasurer's report?
Yes. In the past two weeks, reports in front of you, balance sheet, financial statement and due to and due from. Cash receipts, we took in $2,601, which included a check from Vermont Conservation Revenue for Cranberry Meadow. And then a check from the school district for a dollar for the lease payment fiscal year.
Well, that's a whole nother. Yeah, that's good.
Delinquent taxes, we took in $578.04. I transferred $30,000 from the money market over into our checking. Payroll totaled $8,583.68. Accounts payable, $28,986.14. So over there in the mix in front of you, Chris, with a yellow sticky note, in order for Greg Parker's credit card to be canceled.
Yep.
I'm not sure if that's the one or not.
That was the best one.
No, less the hard one.
Oh, so that's, that's, that's the second thing that I need.
TCM bank, I bet. Is it TCM bank? Sorry, I have a thick packet, yes, it's a big file.
Just to, to.
So they want it filled out, adding me to the account and then I will have control over canceling the account.
Ms. Brandy, can we meet and talk about this?
Yeah.
Just because some of these things, like our credit limit and our desired limit.
Yeah, that has nothing to, yeah, that will be increasing any limits.
Yeah, so it would, and I have.
Yeah, we can chat later.
If we could chat.
Yep.
That would be great. Before I sign off on these things.
Yep, absolutely.
That would be lovely.
They will also need minutes, so it's gonna be a while before I end up sending everything together.
Yeah, I completely understand.
The other thing is having the board sign on the contract for Hardwick Road Exchange.
Any changes to the one we looked at two weeks ago?
Other than removing draft? Nope. And we have twenty, we have next fiscal years up in rock and roll, ready to go on July 1.
Can I send you a new, an updated letterhead? Because that one's got the old, old website on it.
But this is what we have right now?
No, it's time for now, I just wanted to remind myself to send you a updated one.
Okay, so we have category of aid, equipment and labor. Our $3,000 fiscal agreement for '23, including Cape Brook Road, West Woodbury Road, Brown Hill Road.
Yep.
Sound appropriate?
Yep.
And one additional grading project. We have our insurance coverage. Okay, so I will discuss this with Alfie. Just briefly. And then sign it after, after the meeting. If I can wrangle you for a minute.
Sure.
Is that alright? Before I sign off though. Make sure that we're all comfortable. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Alright, thank you. And I have that. I have some other things in here. But I'll talk to Alfie about those. Alright, Ms. Smith, please keep going.
I believe that is it.
Okay. I have a, alright, so Mr. Turkey, this CVS, right? Waste Management Agreement?
Yes.
Right? That's already set.
Is that the one where they're asking who to representative them to?
They have to have a new representative.
They do?
They do, because I'm their current representative, but I'm not supposed to be.
Not what? Supposed to be?
I'm not supposed to be as, as the Select Board member. We were supposed to have had another member. And so I acted as that representative, but we never, we never found anybody. And as the Chair of the Select Board, I'm not supposed to be that person.
Wow, interesting.
Yep. Alright, let's, let's keep going. We have the town commissioners, town road commissioners report.
Okay. Few things to talk about.
Great.
One we just touched on was the Hardwick contract. Think it's all set, it's, there's, there should be no changes from what we wrote before. Dave was out of, he's out of town this week, so I couldn't touch base with him. I was just gonna verify a few things before, but I think we're good. I mean, pretty much what we talked about is what's on that paper, so. Think we're good there. One thing that has come, come up that you guys, I don't know, may be aware of, but Greg had a fall in the town garage.
Just heard about that, from Brandy.
Yep, so he's out of work, has been out since Wednesday, it happened Wednesday last week.
And is he, have you talked to him?
I talked to him Friday was the last time I spoke with him and he said he's got a pile of appointments and his hand is hurting real bad because I think he fell on it. When he tried to catch himself, his hand went under him and he did get it checked out. There was no broken bones, so that's a plus. But he's out of work and I don't know for how long. Of course, we all know he's having an operation on the 10th, so.
He probably has some pre-op.
He does, yes, that's right. And with, with this incident, they're doing extra tests to make sure that there's nothing that's gonna stand in the way of the actual operation, so. So with that said, I've been using Dave Pike quite a bit, but he brought to my attention very recently that he's got some health issues also. So he's not gonna be able to complete our roster as well, so I think.
Does he like wants to work less or not at all?
Well, he's, he just got diagnosed with something and he's going through the, you know, he's gotta do tests and gotta do. So he's working on that and, I mean, he still wants to, but he's just not sure how available he's going to be because of that.
So right now, he's not available?
He is, he worked this morning.
Okay.
And he worked, he'll, he said he'll work tomorrow morning. He's still, he's still plugging away, but I think he was just giving me a heads up that appointments are gonna come and there's gonna be times that he's not gonna be available for us. So I'm wondering, should we put an advertisement together?
I will, I'll volunteer.
Okay. I mean, I've got, I'm still, I'm still looking at a couple of options just by word of mouth, but I think it might be a good idea just to put it out publicly.
Yep, I put it out, but.
Oh, I thought you volunteered to drive the truck. Michael gets to drive the truck.
Yeah, I'll.
You got CDL?
Yeah.
You do.
Oh.
Alright, I'll call you tomorrow morning.
Gonna check him out on the truck?
So I can buy a car?
Yeah, well, I mean, I.
So let me, I'll take over until you figure something out. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm not in desperate mode yet.
Okay.
Because Dave is still. Yep.
Until we figure something else out.
Okay.
Call me.
Don't you have a job?
I do.
Be flexible?
Flexible enough.
Yep.
But my kids have to go to school.
Right. Right. Well, that's, that's very good of you to offer that, so we'll see, yep.
Just let me know.
Yep, okay.
Fair enough.
That's really fair, yeah.
Okay.
So should, are you saying not to advertise?
I think we should advertise. That's what I think. But that's a conversation that we'll have to have. But we have to have it relatively soon. There was another person that you had in mind to, as a road crew member, I can't remember his name.
It was Ed Raoul.
Ed Raoul.
But he wasn't, I asked about him last time.
He's, he's one of my options.
Okay.
He's one of my options.
Still a possibility.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna have to twist his arm a little bit and to get him and we may have to pay a little extra money for him, but he's worth it.
Roads clear.
I think he's worth it and I haven't even talked to him yet, but I, I did tell him the situation that I'm in, so.
And Greg will be out for at least six weeks after the operation.
After the operation, right.
We had planned for that.
Right. Yeah, so I just think, I just think.
Of course, he knows our roads.
He knows our roads, right, right. And I've worked with Ed for 28, 25 years, so we, we click really well. So I'm hoping I can convince him, if I've got some latitude with, with payment for him. I mean, that's, you know.
It won't be as much as what we paid Greg, right?
I don't think so. No, I don't, I don't think so. And you wouldn't be paying him benefits either, because he's part-time.
Yeah, there was a time when, when Michael used to drive the little truck and do like the parking lots and stuff like that.
I did that for a few days in an emergency situation.
A few days, okay.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just thinking further along down the line, because when Greg's out, we're still gonna be short, you know.
Way down, yeah.
And mud seasons come and we're gonna need, you know, foot on deck, so. Hopefully Greg won't be out, I mean, hopefully he'll heal up enough so he can come back before his operation. I know that's, you know, probably not, but I wanna be prepared for if, if he's not. So, I mean, we're, we're doing it, we're getting by. I'll, I'll leave it up to Dave as much as he wants to work. I mean, he came and he plowed for us this morning and then he left at like 10:00 or 10:30, so. If that works for him, it works really good for me, you know. If he can just do a truck, get the roads shaped up in the morning and then Timmy and I can do the maintenance and whatever has to be done throughout the rest of the day.
And if we advertise, are we advertising for another part-timer or full-timer?
I think a part-time, all we got is a part-time position.
Yeah, we can't, until we know when, when Greg's gonna come back and if, we can't really.
Yeah, so it would have to be a part-time position.
Please keep us informed.
Yep, yep, yep.
So are we thinking not to advertise right now? Sounds like you've got it covered for now with Ed.
Well, no, no, I can't, I haven't, I haven't got an answer from Ed.
Wait 10 days.
Okay.
After you talk to Ed.
Okay.
That'll be town meeting time. You can make some more clear choices.
Yep.
And then decide how to move forward. Whether we need to add a position, part-time or not. Then we'll advertise. But I don't wanna do it right this second, but I'm in favor of advertising for a part-time position personally.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Because we're short, you have to do it.
Right, I mean, if Ed doesn't come along and Dave is, is out because of health conditions, at that point, we don't have any part-time.
Right.
So I'm thinking we should try to get, you know, get some in line. They won't, they won't come if they don't know it's available.
Right.
You know, and I can't, I talk to as many people as I can, but I just can't, I can't. I don't have the time to chase.
So you think, you think it's better to get that out?
I do, I think, I think sooner, sooner is better.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's advertise for a part-time position.
Yep.
Fair enough?
Yep.
Robin, can you dig out what we told you last time?
Okay. Mr. Turkey, we already put 300 and something dollars in to get the town meeting advertisement out there.
But Brandy told me that Highway has their own advertising budget.
So we can use some of that money?
We can use some of that, yep, yep.
Use the Highway budget to, was that the Washington ad?
No, Washington World ad is coming up.
That was, that came out of our budget.
Two separate budgets.
As a part-timer, we'll be at a.
Highway.
Okay.
Great.
One's within the government, the other one's in under Highway.
So you did do the ad?
I, I supported the ad.
And it was 300 and something dollars?
364 dollars and something.
Something like that, yeah.
I know you.
I said yes.
I know you wanted to.
I did.
And I said, fine.
And you said, and Mr. Turkey, you wrote me and I said, so. So we put that out. If it even brings two more people, one more person into town meeting, it's worth every penny.
Well, let's get some talking going to get some.
We had a great, we had a great, we had a great mock town meeting.
We did, I got the minutes right here.
Those, 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 those kids were active and vigilant. It was great, so we have a town meeting like our 90 minutes of elementary school kids.
Yeah, if we have a turnout as good as they did, because they have, well, we used to have kids in the school and there was 32 of them there.
Pretty good.
Right, right.
Okay, so I have this document from West Woodbury, for West Woodbury, from Hardwick.
Yep.
Review that briefly.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Not at all.
While I sign it.
Now or later?
Could do it now. I could do it now. It's on the agenda. It's on the agenda. And we're doing our own time. Well, Alfie, you reviewed this with everybody. So you feel like the three grand?
Is money very much.
Still very reasonable, right?
Yeah.
No changes to that?
What they were asking last year when we came to an impasse was like 14 or 15,000 dollars.
It was considerably.
Yeah.
Considerably.
Right.
Good negotiating there.
Yeah, and that, that $3,000 also gets us one grading between now and, and July 1. Yeah, so that's the rest of the plowing service this year and one grading.
And do we renegotiate for 24?
Nope, that's, the, the contract is covering that.
Is covering the initial, yeah.
Then it'll, it'll be 6,000 for.
We have a separate contract that'll go into effect July 1 for the next fiscal year.
Gotcha, yeah.
Did they bill for the $3,000, yeah?
No. But they've been working up there, so getting the contract signed and done deal.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I'm anxious about, is get it, get it in writing.
So once we sign it, I have to bring to Hardwick and make sure that works.
They've been very reasonable, I have to say. They, they're, you know, it's, it's almost like they couldn't wait to start plowing and taking care of those roads up there. It's, I don't know, it's just so. So let's do it before they change their mind.
Is that gone before the Select Board?
Uh, don't know that it has to, because they got a town manager.
They have a town manager.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So you did vote in one time?
I signed one copy. Should I sign both?
The second one is the next year's.
I didn't give you next year's.
Nope, I don't have next year's.
I kept it, yeah, that'll go July 1.
Oh.
I already have one here. I already did.
We should try to do that a little bit ahead though.
Two of them from last year.
So that it's, so that July 1, it's, it's in place and good to go, yeah.
Yep.
Alright. So I have agency of transportation permits that are in front of me right now.
Those are the weight permits?
Those are the overweight permits, yeah. Alright, our excess weight permits, which are ready to be signed. I've signed these in the past with fleet permit permissions. Did you look at these?
I'm aware of them, I haven't looked at those particular ones, but I, I mean, I was, I was very much involved of it in Callas when I was down there.
Okay, I would like you to review these before I sign them.
Okay.
Is that fair enough?
Yep, is it, it's just an application, right? The town gives an application and they put their insurance.
So we have a specific number for max weight. We have timing and we've requested and they've finally given us actual policy numbers. Because it was a big deal in the past where they just gave these blanket sort of open statements on things, which we were not comfortable with. Right, and so now they're giving us some specificity on the vehicles used and some permit numbers. I just want you to look at them before I sign off on them. I have to sign off on them.
Yep.
But I wouldn't mind if you looked first, just take a quick look.
Yep, yeah, I can look right now if you want.
That'd be great, I'd like that very, very much.
Okay, so then from now on out, I will have Pam, have Alfie look at them before we bring them to you.
He really needs to, he really needs to see them before, he needs to be comfortable with us because he's the person on the road.
It's good for him to know who has permits.
And he needs to know who has permits and who does not.
Yeah, well, they, all the ones that have been, been signed by you, so I have that.
And that was.
And these will just be added to that list.
This is added to that list.
Yep.
Do they, when do they roll over, is it March?
It rolls over in, you know, January 1st is when they roll over.
Right, right.
So can I?
Yeah, please, Ms. Brandy.
So the minutes for the credit card have to state that the board agrees and appoints to put my name on the credit card in order for me to then delete the credit card.
So should, we should, hold on now.
Yeah, it has to be the minutes, have to be involved, yeah. All I'm doing is adding me to the account. And from now on, if the Highway wants a credit card, it will have both the treasurer's name and. Because this is.
So want to tell me again what exactly it's supposed to say or just you can put that?
Nobody said it yet. Well, so the minutes have to state that you have given your treasurer, Brandy Smith, permission to be on the town's credit card.
Registration number.
Greg Parker's Visa credit card.
Stuff is coming through, but the number of truck. And they finally gave. So I still have that much. So we have some sense of like what should be coming through and what isn't coming through.
So that, that's coming from DMV?
This is coming from DMV. Gotcha, it's there.
So the motion was for the board to approve.
On here, for their liability insurance.
Town bank that we approve adding town treasurer Brandy Smith to the Visa account that's currently.
Sign it if you feel like it's, you're comfortable with, but.
Yeah, and then they're just.
I mean, they're pretty normal. I mean, they're pretty normal. I know, I shall know that, I know their trust. But we do have to, yeah, so. Back to our brothers. I just want you to be aware of these before we.
Yeah, yeah, well, I can, from, in the future, I can view them at the office. If the girls put it together, I can just view it there.
Yes.
And then you can kind of relate as far as I'm going.
And then I'll, I'll review it and I'll sign it.
You know what you could do Alfie, just so, cause usually they're in a file, um, is just maybe initial them so that when Chris makes it in there, cause it, it might be after town office hours, he'll, he'll know that you've looked at it.
That you've taken a look at them, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Cause I, I really don't, I mean. I'm good at reviewing those, I have a general sense of the weights.
Yeah.
But I'm not out on the road every day.
Right, right.
And you are.
Well, I'm gonna be the guy that.
Has to act.
Kicks, kicks them off if they are, are, you know. Visualizes the damage that they do, all that, so.
And so if we have to renegotiate with Swenson, for instance, because of overweight trucks.
Right.
I wanna know some numbers.
Yeah.
So I can work with them and say, hey, Capitol Road's getting torn up.
Yeah.
Because you guys, you know, have regular overweight trucks.
Right.
Which we permit.
Right, right.
But you're not paying enough for us to keep up.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's true, that's definitely something.
And you have a better sense of it than I do, so I, I do not wanna sign those unless you review them first.
Yeah, okay.
Is that reasonable?
That's totally reasonable, yeah, I have no problem with that.
Great, thank you.
I mean, the weight that they put on like for Swenson, for example, the weight that's on that form, is that the total loaded weight that they carry or is that?
It's an estimate of weight.
Well, it should be what the truck is rated for, what it's, what it's registered for. Cause they have to pay the state on their weight. So what that truck is registered for is what should be on here.
But you know they're overweight.
They're, they're often overweight, yes, yeah.
I mean, there's almost no way.
And that's when, and that's when if there's an event, like they crashed one of our bridges, that truck's gonna be weighed. And if they're over their permit here, they're in hot water.
Right.
We can go after them for that, because they've put a illegal number here.
Fully a little load on their trucks, yeah, so I just, I want the review from you. I'll review it as well, it's not on you, I just want two sets of eyes on it.
Right, right, yeah.
Thank you.
So Chris, Brandy needs us to vote on getting her name on the Visa credit card. And Diana has a motion that she wrote down.
We just need you to say all in favor.
Just read the motion.
Oh, alright.
It's a Christmas item.
It's alright. Um, so that the select board has, uh, is authorizing the bank to add the trans, town treasurer Brandy Smith's name to the Visa card currently issued in Greg Parker's name.
And I second that motion, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So moved.
So that will be our mess.
Alright. Let's move on to the Cranberry Meadow Wetland grant agreement, please.
Okay. Well, this is been around on your emails a couple of times and last, at the last meeting, I gave you a copy with some notes on it in case you had any questions. Basically, this is just saying that we want the money, but we're still not gonna get the money until we do all these different things. But this is basically just so they can allocate the money. It's already been approved. So any more questions?
I had, I had no comments on that for the most part, I was comfortable with that after you had done all that work and sort of narrowed it down to a whole bunch of nonsense that we didn't really need to deal with.
They do, they do.
There was a lot of stuff in there that just didn't make sense.
Well, I wired a lot and that's why they said, okay, we'll do this one, we'll do this one, we'll do this one.
Well, thank you for being proactive.
Yeah, so we still, the one thing that we have to do, they said our lawyer's gonna know all the stuff that he has to do and the one thing we have to do is write a management plan and I met with the Conservation Commission last week and they're gonna help with a management plan. You know, I don't know how much management there's actually gonna be.
Hopefully none, hopefully it just gets left.
Sorry, Michael Pete's Marlowe, that's who it is.
It just gets left alone.
I've been managing the water level, um, mostly for the roads, um, but, um, I also had conferred with Susan Sawyer about what she felt the water level should be for. So, and I'll probably check in with Matt Peters too now that he's, he's done kind of a, a survey of what's there. Cause he did mention something about trying to keep the water level a certain height, so.
I mean, there shouldn't be a road there in the first place, right?
Well, you know, when you go around Cranberry Meadow Pond and there's nothing there to keep you from going into the water and the water is a foot or less away from the road, yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's a road in the middle of a.
And this wetland area.
Of a fenn.
And whatever the level is in the wetland areas, this, it controls the level on it too.
Right.
I also sent an email last week to Michael and Susan Sawyer and Matt Peters, since they're the ones that are most familiar with the property to see what they had suggestions for the management plan.
Yeah, and the Conservation Commission will, will work on that and come up with something soon.
So are you asking us to sign this draft letter?
It's not a draft anymore, so.
Okay, so this is a letter?
That's the actual copy.
This is the physical copy?
Yes.
This is a copy, this is a copy.
Copy of the copy.
There's a, yeah, there, like I said, if you want me to send this to you by email and.
No, I've seen it enough, enough times.
Just make them deal with a physical signature then.
This is great, this has been a project that's been thought about for many years now.
Three.
Yeah, well, even, even before that.
Years before that, good gracious me.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, that's right.
Quite a number of times for that.
Susan is always gonna wish it Susan's. And though it looks like nothing, it's actually a pretty, um, significant wetland according to a number of state naturalists, et cetera, so.
It's a significant one.
Okay.
Some rare things in there.
Thank you.
Alright, lovely, thank you, thank you for all the work.
So, um, I don't think we have to vote on this, we have voted on it in the past.
We've voted on it in the past.
We've signed it, we've signed the.
We've signed it officially.
Purchase and sale agreement about three years ago now. Michael signed that.
Great. Alright, we have to move on to ARPA. We've had some record of new applications being listed, but we do not have any activity from our appointed committee, as far as I know.
Right, what, what, Laura since prepared a document recently that I got by email and I think she was gonna put it on Front Porch Forum, I don't know if she has yet.
I saw that posting today.
And the Woodbury Community Facebook page telling people that there is gonna be another round of applications and the deadline is March, is May first. So I thought this would be a good time for us to.
Return to.
To discuss whether the select board should support using some of that fund for uh, something that would benefit the town as a whole, for some highway equipment.
Grader.
And Chuck and Alfie are gonna work on a plan, put together a plan for, you have a truck and a grader or just a?
Uh, well, depends on how much money is available. Of course.
Well, we appointed a committee.
Yeah, but the committee has done their work, they did a survey and the survey said that the first thing that people were interested in was broadband and the second thing was roads.
We've, we've.
We're not gonna build any roads, so I guess that.
We've accomplished broadband as best as we possibly can.
Yeah.
Right?
We did right by that.
We did right by that.
Yeah.
So next is roads. But there are a number of other applications that were in there.
Right, that are still, we are still.
That are still pending and we haven't dealt with.
Right.
So before we discuss new concerns, even though they were high on the list, we need to address those others.
So you mean we need to approve them?
We have to do something with them, either approve them.
Well, I think, but I can just be in the mix with the new ones that come in. We don't, just because they came in last year doesn't mean that, uh, they get a higher priority, in, in my opinion.
It's, that's, yeah, that's, uh.
What opinion?
That's, that's, that's an opinion.
Yeah.
I do think that those applications that have been around for sixteen to eighteen months need to be addressed before we address new concerns. I really feel like we do, either a yes or a no, but we've never done that. We've never actually gone to those and if we don't do that, the people who have spent, like, spent considerable time making those applications have no way to, you know, they have, they have no recourse, so I think before we address anything new, we need to go back through the old. So it's my personal opinion that we should address all of the previous applications.
Yes or no?
Before, yeah, as yes or no's. Before we address anything new. I think we have to go through that list, I think it's only fair. There are people who have, have made reasonable, reasonable lots of decisions.
Maybe we should put that on an agenda for a future meeting then.
I really think we do, I think that this is something for a future meeting where we genuinely address previous applications for, you know, allocations for ARPA funds before we move on to new allocations. We've gone through the list and we highlighted some. Let's make, let's give yes or no votes to the rest and then we'll move on to new. I don't wanna leave those lingering, it just seems very, very unfair to the group of people who had applied the first time around. As much as I would love to have Highway get new equipment, I feel like we have to make sure that we've addressed those previous.
How many are there, in the row?
There's, it's very.
There's about six more.
There's like six.
The fire department wanted all the money. And then there's, uh.
That's a significant amount of money, which is fine.
When the, uh, there's some town hall and town office energy work that we never really got a good price on.
We can't entertain those at this meeting.
Well, but.
Not without addressing those, not without addressing.
No, I think, I think that's just sharing what the outstanding ones are.
But I think we have to address the previous outstanding before we move on to new. It's only fair.
I don't agree that that's alright.
Well, tell me why you don't agree.
Because I think we should be able to look at this pot of money as something that's gonna benefit the town as a whole, that's the reason why these people, the, the board, the committee agreed to have it in two phases because they thought that every, people might come up with more ideas during the second year, that they didn't think of the first time.
Great.
And, and you have a.
Which means we still need to address.
You have a deadline, so you have a deadline for.
We do have that.
For getting applications in there.
For the new ones.
So it would seem like you should have the whole pot of applications together and then, and then evaluate each and pick the ones that are most suited for the best of the town.
When I see, when I read in the papers about how other towns are allocating, you know, deciding what to do with their ARPA money, it's, uh, they're taking it pretty seriously and trying to spread things out as much as possible to infrastructure and new projects and I think we could need to be deliberate about it, it's not a lot of money, I mean, three hundred and something thousand dollars. Not like some towns that are dealing with millions.
So what do you disagree with?
I disagree with having to say yes or no to all these right now, I'd rather say yes or no to them as part of a mix.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Okay, so we should set up a timeframe after the rest of the applications are in.
Right.
Is that some reasonable?
Sure.
So our deadline is May one for the rest of the applications? So it didn't matter that people took advantage of the first deadline?
No, I mean, if there's a good idea, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Still a good idea, but.
So we're gonna have a new deliberation for twenty twenty-two.
Does anybody have a calendar to know when the first select board meeting would be after May first?
Uh, eight, oh, first, no, the eighth.
I don't think that gives us enough time, I don't, I'm sorry.
But, but you could have it soon after, I mean, later in May or June or whatever.
You know, none of these are time sensitive really, but.
They are, yeah.
It would be good not to put them off forever.
Which we just did in the past.
Well, yeah, we, we approved the ones as they became necessary, although some of them were a little early, like we thought the outdoor classroom was ready to be built and.
We thought it would be built already, you're right, yeah.
And the State Board of Education got involved.
And some interesting choices on there.
And, uh, it's got bogged down. Alright, but it should, actually, I think that should happen next spring, summer. I think all of the stuff that we did is.
Alright, so let's let's plan, we have a select board meeting on the eighth of May, Monday, the third. Right?
Yeah.
We do not have another until the twenty-second of May, seems like that's getting a little long in the teeth.
May eighth is the second Monday?
Yeah, the first is the first.
First is the first.
The first is Monday. Yeah.
So I think that we should have on the agenda on May eighth a proposal review. Just really don't wanna let this go. We'll have, we, we will have time, we'll have a week to review any other applications that come in by the May one deadline.
Yeah.
And we have our pending applications that have been submitted over a year ago. At that point, I think that it's fair for review and a decision. Michael? Diana, it's good.
Okay.
Okay. And so that should be on that agenda for.
Sure.
And we'll, we should make Laura aware that that's the, that's the plan.
Yeah. I don't recall whether her new form that she prepares that the application's going to the town office, probably.
I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen them yet.
She said, well.
That's, is that what happened before, went right to the town office or did they?
No, I went to the group and then.
They went to the group and then.
Yeah. Well, Steve's sick, maybe she's, I hope they don't have COVID again. I mean, he said in his email that he couldn't be here tonight because he was sick, so. Hopefully she's not.
Alright, so we have a plan for ARPA review. Okay, um, window dressers, perfect.
So, we, we were studying what to do with the town hall. So we were studying what to do with the town hall. Michael, you want to say how you first got introduced to this?
Uh, yeah, this was, the window dressers program was first introduced to me when we had the energy assessments of the different town buildings, the town garage, the town office and the town hall. And it was a person from Efficiency Vermont that came and did that assessment. And one of the programs that she mentioned was this window dressers program. It's basically program, I don't know if it's an actual nonprofit or what, but they will, they come and oversee a program for making storm windows where town volunteers actually do the work, will provide the materials, et cetera. I know Diana and Gwen Marcia had a chance to go to one of those workshops recently.
Yes, since Michael mentioned this a year or more ago. I heard about a meeting taking place in Hardwick. Hardwick wanted to get involved also, Greens, I mean Grassbury. Grassbury's been very active over several years and they provided a lot of these double plastic storm windows inserts. So I took Gwen and we went up to a meeting in Hardwick and she volunteered to be the town director, whatever, try to get people involved and interested. Uh, we're going to learn how to measure. There's a laser measure, a laser measuring tool, so if people are interested, we go in their house and we measure what they want and send the measurements off to this nonprofit in Maine that puts together the whole package of how many sticks you need for each window and and then there's a big community event that involves building, actually building the windows, putting together the frames and wrapping them with plastic and 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 it is possible to do something that's big enough to that the town hall windows wouldn't be too big. So all the other, we had our town hall committee, we talked about windows a lot, never came up with anything good that wasn't incredibly expensive, so. They are interested in coming to the town hall. Well, it was going to be March 18th, but I don't think we're going to have the water on by then, so I think Gwen's going to ask them to wait until the following month.
We can have the water turned on anytime.
Oh, okay.
In fact, I have to get hold of Paul so he can turn it off for me for Saturday.
Oh, okay, okay. So what they want, what the guy from Hardwick wants to use that as an exercise for measuring. Bring the measuring students in there and measure those big windows.
What's the cost to us? Cost.
Cost, um, can you hand that back to me then? Anybody who claims that they can't really afford it can get up to ten a treat. They don't have to know like schedule of, you know, prices or income or anything like that. Anyone who wants three can get a hundred dollars rebate from Efficiency Vermont. But generally, a medium size thirty by fifty-two can be forty-four dollars if you pay for the full cost. But there are also grants available from different places.
Are we talking about the town hall or are we talking about public access?
No, we're talking about, this is just for public. The town hall, I don't know how much it would be. I would say maybe fifty dollars a piece.
I think, well, I think the seventy, seventy something dollar piece is going to be a lot closer.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know the
Stuff pretty
Person who did the assessment also mentioned that the town office windows could be made for, and that would make a big difference there.
Except the town office has shades. So
It leaks a, it leaks like a sieve, anyway.
Randy?
So are these storm plastic windows or they're?
They're
They're storm windows.
They're storm windows, but they're inserts.
And they're plastic.
Okay.
And they are plastic. They're two layers of plastic and they're clear, but they
So they're on the outside of the building, not the inside of the building?
No, they're on the inside.
On the inside.
Yeah, inside. So if you've got shades, you like roll the shades or something, then it might, you know, it'd be a little tricky.
We had our lister, delinquent tax collector, asked me if I could replace the shades in the windows in the
Oh, that, yeah, that one that's broken.
And you can get shades that go on the outside of the windows, so.
Yeah.
It wouldn't hurt to replace all of the shades and I've tried to use some
Well, that, those little, those mini going things are crappy worthless anyways, so.
So that would be part of the plan.
So I figured once we proceed with this and seeing the windows, then go from there.
So, yeah.
So are you, are you advocating for for us to pursue this?
Yeah, I'm really only just, yeah, saying that I hope the book town would buy into this because we're going to be asking Robin for using the town hall and things like that. The Conservation Commission, I talked to them last week and they were interested and a couple of them volunteered to.
Yeah, I definitely would advocate for this and if if it's a later date than March 18th, I would actually be physically able to help.
But when it comes time to putting them together, that won't be till the fall.
Okay, alright, well, I should be definitely very
We have a few minutes, a few months to enroll people to, now Gwen's going to set up a table at town meeting and Robin said that was okay. We haven't figured out that detail yet, but to start handing out, we're going to have some of these flyers printed up and there's another one that comes from the actual nonprofit in Maine.
See those shades?
I ordered some of those.
Yeah.
Actually, you know, the this community, we have a couple of storm windows there. Is all of those double pane windows then or are they just single glass?
No, they're single glass.
A lot of
Plenty of opportunities for
Plenty of opportunities.
Well, it sounds great then.
The thing is that you're supposed to take them, in order to make them last, you're supposed to take them out and store them during summer.
Yeah, we'll have to figure out prices for them. At the basement.
There's a way, there's a way, if we want to pursue this. So it sounds like something that's worth pursuing, yes?
Right, yeah, sure, we're pursuing it and Gwen's going to take the lead. We're having a
That's great.
Measuring class tomorrow and I'm just going to follow along is
When is that?
Uh, tomorrow at three o'clock.
3:00 PM tomorrow.
At the co-op in the basement? Oh, wow.
Which co-op?
The Buffalo Mountain Co-op.
The old one or the new Buffalo?
The new one.
The new one?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Bill Titsley, who is the Hardwick Energy Coordinator, he is the Hardwick Coordinator for this project and he is the facilities manager at the co-op, so he has access to the space in the basement.
And how would you even know about that unless someone told you?
Which? About Bill?
The measuring session.
Oh, um, well, ever since we went to that meeting in Hardwick, we've been emailing.
But it's not advertised. No, I don't think it is. So it's just between you all. So like I would, I would have no idea.
Oh, great, right, right, right. And yeah, one of the first steps that we're not really there yet is going out for more volunteers.
Right. Going out for more volunteers by not advertising it.
No, it's not, this is only like the second meeting, the second, the second meeting.
I'm just curious, that's still where we're going.
Yeah.
Because we have a table at the, we have a table that you've set up.
Yeah, that's another, that's one step.
Right, and, right, that's a step.
Yeah, and there'll be more than one training for measuring.
Well, yeah, so I guess we're moving forward with this, whether we like it or not, right? Good. Which brings us very nicely into our town meeting and pre-town meeting. Ms. Diana, keep going.
So, yeah, um we, I read you that thing from Steve Murphy about people want to show up at eight, what is it, eight forty-five? Instead of ten o'clock and tell people what we do.
That's great.
I started a list, but I got tired.
Ms. Ricky, what do we need, what do you need from us in terms of getting town meeting all set?
The actual, excuse me, the actual setup up in the gym, Donnie's going to take care of that for me. Setting the chairs up and getting the tables and whatnot.
And does he know that Stephen's going to want to do something at eight forty-five?
No, no, that's the pre-town meeting. That's when it's going to be in the town hall.
Pre-town hall for a time.
I think for the pre-town meeting, all we do is set chairs up, right?
Right, should be fun.
Yep.
Okay.
Turn the heat on.
Then I'm going to go in Friday and turn the heat up.
Okay.
And even if And make sure the water's on.
You know, if he cleans up the parking lot, you'll still need to do some shoveling probably, huh?
Yes, yes, I am going to work on the stairs on Wednesday.
Oh. And it's supposed
I will also work on the stairs on Wednesday.
Well, thank you.
Pretty helpful tonight, yeah. You got to take off or?
Am I usually not helping? It's really, it's a little cold.
I was going to say John Phelps helped me shovel off, the last time we had that great big huge snowstorm.
Really?
He came over and helped me shovel the ramp and the platform, right to the stairs.
And the platform, yeah.
Which was very, I was very thankful.
Um, have we talked to Stephen about anything he needs from us for his pre-town meeting? I mean, he's, he's got it in hand based on
He just needs the key so we can get in.
Fair enough.
Yep.
And you're happy to
Yep.
Work with him? He's, he's great, so.
And the podium has the mallet and everything else, right?
No, no, the podium belongs to the school.
Yep.
The mallet is in this little brown box that she'll bring.
And the, I gotcha.
With all the little
Well, I need that Saturday?
No, no.
No, it's hard to know.
I didn't think so.
No. He'd bring his own mallet.
I know, we need a mallet on Saturday, no.
Okay.
Might get rowdy.
No, I think We usually have it there.
We usually get maybe twelve or fifteen people at the pre-town meeting, so this will be interesting. I have an extra hour.
I think it's great.
And it's on Saturday.
Yeah.
Steve right after used to basically just go through the warning and if there's any discussion, it would be, that would happen then.
I think it's really good, actually. Okay. Any other pre-town meeting or town meeting business that we need to discuss?
Alright, I thought I
Alright, so it is now seven oh two and we are going to move into executive session.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we close this part of the meeting and enter executive session to discuss pending litigation as allowed under one VSA 313A1E.
Do I have a second for the motion?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. We are now in executive session for the Woodbury Select Board Monday, February 27th at seven oh three PM.